Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this eighth day of March 2021 at 3 o'clock PM. Please pray with us if you care, and then we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you with grateful hearts, thanking you so much for this wonderful weather we're experiencing now after going through briefness spell of bitterly cold. Dear Lord, as the farmers enter the fields to plant their crops and we have a renewal of the landscape, we just pray that our faith would be renewed also in you, dear Lord. Thank you so much for your blessings. Be with us as we make our decisions today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening of sealed bids for the 2011-2021 asphalt. I wish it was 2011. 2021 asphalt.
Good afternoon.
And bid package one and two.
Correct.
All right, here goes the first bid. There we go. First bid for the first category is from Harding Group out of Indianapolis. Harding Group's bid is $747,199.60.
So it's next one tonight.
All right, the next one is from Dave O'Meara out of North Vernon. Dave O'Meara's bid is $774,905.60. Next is from Milestone out of Columbus. Milestone's bid is $875,900.875,900.00. Fourth and final bid is from Alco Inc. out of Batesville. Alco's bid is $855,777.73.855,777.73. That's all of them for the first package.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to turn them over to look for review and come back for our next deal for our award.
Have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, for bid package two, the first bid is from Harding Group out of Indianapolis. Harding Group's bid is $637,544.637,544.00. The next bid is from Dave O'Meara, North Vernon. Dave O'Meara's bid is $884,791.72.884,791.72. Next for Milestone out of Columbus. Milestone's bid is $864,535.50.864,535.50. The last bid is from Alco Inc. out of Batesville. Alco's bid is $959,900.72.959,900.72.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also make a motion to attorneys over to look, let them come back for our next bid.
Have a motion in the second. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Go to Worthley. Opening of sealed quotes for Community Corrections GPS Monitoring Equipment Project.
The first one is, oh, sorry, Jason, you want to be the intro?
Uh, sure.
No, maybe don't. It's fine.
I'll do that.
How you talking about?
Yeah, Executive Director of Johnson County Community Corrections. This is, it's to replace our current GPS location for home detention, so.
Here we go.
There we go.
All right, the first one is from Sierra Wireless from Atlanta, Georgia. You guys just do this too for entertainment value, I know. All right, let's see here. Looks like their bid isn't in a amount each per day, but I'm sure it's.
So, um, there are, how GPS works is that there is a fee that they use per day, per user. That's the way it usually works. So it's active units. It depends on the contract, but it could be that it would be that a situation where instead of us purchasing the equipment and appointing it outright, that we lease the equipment from Sierra and then they charge us a daily fee for using the equipment that's for the active users.
Okay, so on the quote form, the amount is $2.70 each per day for approximately 200 participants.
For how many? Should we do 250?
200.
200.
Yep.
Approximately, I mean, it's number.
And again, most of the companies will have some sort of an allowance for the amount of equipment that you can have on the shelf. So like 30 or 20% before you get any kind of charge. So it'll vary between 200 and 250, without any particular cost.
Okay. The next one is from GeoStatus out of Atlanta.
Must be an actual process, don't it?
Okay. All right, and this one from GeoStatus is for $3.10 price per active day per device.
Yes.
For approximately 200. Okay.
Let's not be a case knife.
Got it.
Move. Well, there's the problem.
He had a boss knife, but they took it away from him when he come through security.
All right, this one is from BI Boulder, Colorado.
BI is our current company. They also have a local office in Anderson.
This is $3.25 per unit, per day, all inclusive, daily GPS rental and monitoring for 200 participants.
Somebody's speaking. They can put one more word in.
We'll let Ron do that.
Not sure I have a sound, buddy.
Okay.
See, that's where it all started. Where is that? He's looking.
This one came from Florida.
Like Christmas.
I thought for sure there'd be a single. These boxes, they're not.
I thought they were.
Your room safe. One is, okay. Apple's apples, $2.88 a day for each active unit, so $5.06 a day for 200 active assets. Buddy, who you be the apple? Last one. Is it the tentai or a tenti?
A tenti.
A tenti. Sorry. All right. A tenti is $2.79 per day, $2.79 cents per day, per unit. And they multiply it out, times 200, times 300 cents per day, so 230,670 dollars. That's it.
I would make a motion to turn them over to Jason, let him review, and I would suspect he would come back here for contractual, but I'm sure he'll go through the Community Corrections Board also and review some of these pricing and information.
That's correct. And I believe our next of board meeting is on the week of the 26th of April. So I would suggest that we do it for the Commissioners meeting after that one.
Okay.
So the first one of May.
Sir, have a motion in a second.
I've got one question I want to ask. Are these binding on duration of these quotes, 30 days, 60 days, 120?
I don't believe that that was the one, so.
Well, you got a lot to review. Jason will come back with that. Just let us know if something changes from now, so then we might have to expect some stuff. Some pricing.
And Director, is there any advantage to buying and owning our own, or would that be a disadvantage?
So.
It's, I don't know if it's more costly or less costly.
It really depends. The first time when we, when Albert, the previous Executive Director, was making this evaluation, they decided to purchase it because when you do purchase it, the daily cost goes down because they, there's the lease cost in there also. So there's advantages and disadvantages to it. The advantage to having the leasing is all the repairs and equipment and everything that you use on a regular basis is included in the lease. But if you purchase it and you take good care of the equipment, I think in the long run, it can be more cost effective. I think most of them have gone towards a lease type situation. That is not to say that in discussions that, I know, for instance, that BI is open to us purchasing the equipment again and being able to using it that way too. And we can give some pricings both ways to be able to see which more, which way is more cost effective for us.
Do they get a lot of abuse, though, I guess?
Yes, they absolutely do. And so, I mean, obviously, it's one of those situations where we have seen just about anything and everything that you can possibly imagine, from them throwing it out the window on the highway to them throwing it in the middle of the field and it's out there for days, you know? So it's one of those situations where they absolutely do take a lot of abuse and they're, but they are all designed to be able to take that kind of abuse and be able to stand up to it, so.
Unless somebody runs over it up the road or whatever.
Yeah, and I mean, people have absolutely taken hammers and stuff to them and trying to destroy them and everything.
Yes, I was curious. I just assumed they took a lot of abuse, but I wasn't sure if we're making for that to the point where we're fighting.
Right.
How's that work with the lease arrangement? If somebody takes a hammer to it, I'm assuming that the company that's leasing it's not going to take that back under a warrant.
No.
Do we have to repay? We pay for that, or?
So there is always clauses for how it works and it depends on the company, if it's leased or it's purchased. So for our purchase equipment, we're on the hook. So when we do a violation for that person, we always include the cost of the equipment. And so the court can know so that if they escape or if there is any kind of thing that that is included in the price that they're held accountable for, whatever it is now, that would, that would still be the same collections as it would be if it was leased. If we did it, we would still file the violation and include that in the cost of backed up fees that they owe us.
Have a motion in the second. On the floor, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. You need a card.
Yes.
You're fine, sir. Take your time. Don't throw your bag out.
Thank you.
Prevent Child Abuse Council in Banner and Pinwheel Garden, pending legal review, just for those.
Is anybody on?
Not that I know of.
This is somewhere down there.
Wait, I'm only understanding that they don't want an event, but they want to have the pinwheels up from April 1st to 9th?
Yeah, they've done this before. I mentioned before that's wrong, so I want to make a motion to approve pending legal.
Okay. Have a motion in the second, pending legal. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This next one, number six, we're going to take these all for approval all at the same time. So we're going to have to go through the explanation of each. And I know Commissioner Walls, his motion wants to give a dissertation, so.
I just think it's important to know where all this grant money's going from the county, so unless you have an objection to it. So this is for treatment and intervention. We've got Heaven Earth Church Recovery Church. We've got Terror Treatment Center, two transitional residential programs, Reach for Youth Alcohol Tobacco and Drug Counseling, Turning Point Domestic Violence Substance Abuse Treatment and Intervention. We've got some prevention education. Those are going from Boys and Girls Clubs, Smart Moves, Core and Nicotine Models, Modules, Girls Inc., Friendly Peer Smart Choices, Turning Point Domestic Violence Services Primary Prevention Programming. We've got some justice law enforcement grants, Johnson County Adult Probation Drug Screening, Johnson County Community Corrections Drug Screening, Franklin Police Department Narcotics Division Equipment, Greenwood Police Department Narcotics Division Equipment, Greenwood Probation Drug Screen Testing Program, Johnson County Juvenile Probation Substance Abuse Year-end Screening. And I think that's it. I just wanted to make a point. That's a, that's a large list and I, grant money that's going out. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but I'm going to say somewhere around the total of 100,000 would be rough. Did you, did you add it all up wrong?
No, I didn't, but there's 25% of it's discretionary. So you have these, these three categories and then one category is discretionary, so. And I don't know who's in charge of the discretionary aspect of it, but.
Whoever receives the grant.
Yeah.
I can elaborate if you'd like. My name's Michelle McMahon and I'm the coordinator for Drug Free Johnson County. Thank you all for letting me be here today. And I would share that, yeah, up to 25% can be discretionary, but this year we actually moved some of that discretionary money and reallocated it into one of the other categories. It went into treatment intervention because we had so many great grant applications and such a need in our community to be able to do a little bit more. And so I just appreciate your time today. And if you have any questions about any of the specifics, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
No, thank you.
No, I'm good. That's my motion to approve.
Say it. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Seven has been pulled until the 22nd. A and B. Elected officials and department heads, extension office approval of a native seed library to replace on Johnson County 4-H Fairgrounds property. It's approved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any further? There's no machines.
Sarah, you want to talk about those?
If you have any questions about it, I'm happy to elaborate.
No questions.
No, no questions.
All right.
Motion in second. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Health Department approved to apply for ISDH 2021 meal allowance.
Fetsy Swearingen, Director of the Johnson County Health Department. I'm here on behalf of Lisa Brown, my Director of Nursing, who is giving vaccinations at JMH right now. Just, we're asking for your permission to apply for the 2021, it's IDOH, they've changed their, you know, branding now, for the naloxone kit grant that we give that to our fire departments, first responders, and we've actually given some to adult and child as well.
Okay. And these are distributed throughout the whole county to all the municipalities?
That ask for them? Yes.
Okay.
Based on their need.
Yeah. I would go ahead for approval.
When you have that, which left, become repetitive in the need for this drug? Do we do anything? Do we, is there a course involved in that and moving them into a treatment of one sort or another? Or do you just, we just keep doing that perpetuity?
Yeah, I know that the first responders have a lot of frequent flyers and that's why this grant helps keep the cost down for them so that, you know, it can be funded by the state and not by each independent EMS agency. No, we do not put any stipulations on the use of it or we don't get into the whole treatment portion of it. We do not provide the naloxone for the general public at the health department at this point per our board's request and for safety purposes.
It just looks to me like there ought to be some, some rehabilitative measure attached to the use of this, especially repeated.
Well, you would think so, but from what I understand from these first responders, these people would prefer not to have this drug and are usually very combative and unhappy. On them, so if they had their way, they'd say leave them like they are, but it is what it is.
It's a moral question.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Have a motion in second. Bossy, approval of Catherine Wood's enter service agreement.
I'm Lauren Rainierston, Bossy, a Director. Just approval for the service agreement with my web designer, Catherine Woods.
Have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lauren.
Animal Control Ordinance 2021-0-2, Amendment Johnson County Ordinance is 15-3, -3-1, we're going to be skitter for Johnson County Animal Control, second reading.
Got a question for you.
Mr. Michael. All right.
I got a call from a gentleman down in the southern part of the county, and I guess you guys picked this wiggle up one day. Anyway, he was concerned about the way the ordinance is now that any animal that's running outside needs to have a leash on it. His contention was he uses this wiggle for rabbit hunting and he can't keep up with it if he's got a leash on it. He was wondering if there would be any consideration in regard to animals that are used for hunting purposes. He's got, I think he said 45 acres and he hunts with the dog frequently, but sometimes the dog gets away, you know how they are.
I, I think there's a provision in the, the Failure to Restrain Ordinance law that if an animal's engaged in lethal hunting, it does not have to have a leash.
Okay, so there is some wording in there?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Typically, we rarely ever get animals in there engaged in lethal hunting, but sometimes they might get away and then get out somewhere else.
And I don't know the circumstances under which this is now up in your possession, but anybody that only might ask the question.
If it's engaged in legal hunting, the leash is required.
Okay.
Sure.
If you get a chance, maybe email me that wording in there somewhere that I can copy it.
Will do, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
Good.
Yeah, I.
Sir, have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just real quickly, you remember Rosie?
I do.
Rosie's doing well.
Good deal.
Chief Pell has really done a great job.
Yeah, she's becoming a star. And that is really, really cool. Yeah, she's, I think there's going to be a few articles that will.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners.
I met a gentleman this morning. It was highly complimentary of you and, and your staff out there. And he's a member of your Bible class.
Oh, okay. Very good. All right. Well, I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Thanks for pressing on, Commissioner.
A lot of nice things to say.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Sheriff, approval of OD body scanners contract.
Good afternoon. Duane Burgess Johnson County Sheriff. DoD body scanner, just renewed that for three years, at least we have any parts or anything that goes south on that. It's an expensive piece of equipment that we utilize at the jail every day.
With your approval, I know it's been a valuable asset for you.
Second. Have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Planning and zoning consideration of rezoning proposal parcel 41-04-08-22-026.001-038. Wow.
Good afternoon. Michelle, Answer Director of Planning and Zoning. Before you, a certificate of recommendation for rezoning of a particular real estate in White River Township. Request was submitted by Eric Prime, who's representing Del Raper, who is the owner of the property. The request was to rezone 2.13 acres with that parcel number that you created along Old State Road 37 from our lone single-family residential to B2 community business. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on February 23rd, 2021. There were a few demonstrators present at the meeting as well as a series of few letters. The board unanimously gave an unfavorable recommendation to deny the rezoning proposal. We ask you to affirm that unfavorable recommendation and reject the proposal. I believe Eric Prime is here in the audience today as well as the demonstrators. If you guys have any questions for them.
And just courtesy, I would, I don't know if it's appropriate or not to let Mr. Prime speak. I do have to say in advance that I've served on planning and zoning and I actually made a motion to deny their application.
I think any, any hearing on this would not go through us anyway. It would go back through planning and zoning.
Correct. I mean, I believe legislation says that the public hearings of Plan Commission board.
I don't know that we would get, unless there's questions in legality, but I don't know that we would do that here anyway.
There was one change since the Plan Commission period.
They made a change to the site plan that their proposal for the self-storied units.
It's still the same area, though.
Still same consideration, still the same use, same thing, but it just, it alleviates the. Still same consideration, so same use, same thing, but it just, it alleviates the de-fair variance that they were seeking as well.
Regardless of variance, it would still not be recommended to. Whatever you wanted to say.
I hope that, I hold the denial.
Sir. And a motion second to hold denial. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hosts, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Public Safety Communications, approval execution interlokal agreement between Morgan County and Johnson County.
Keith Brandt, I have a one director. So we have here is an interloper agreement between our dispatch center, the county's dispatch center, to allow them space on our occurrence, like Houston, which is our fire dispatching serve. And in turn, they will purchase a CAD-to-CAD module for us and allow us to check our calls back and forth without making phone calls to, to one another, which would be important with the I sixty-nine project that's, that's going on.
I had, did you get any questions, Ron? Just, uh, the boilerplate language of the indemnification. That was, when I read through that, Morgan County's indemnifying us, we're indemnifying them, but well, I mean, if an individual brings a suit, who's going to defend who in that?
Right. Well, I, I think it's pretty low risk to start with, so I don't think we're going to have an issue like that.
Yeah, I understand that, but a nine-one-one call when somebody is as a result of an accident or something, and then they want to, I'll assume that they didn't dispatch the call, you know, I, I guess curious as to how that indemnification works.
Coming to the player, pertained would be if the bill against the dispatching unit that the county gets from at that point, would it not be?
Correct. I mean, and, and if there's a problem with the system, I mean, every post dispatcher still has the ability to dispatch, where some word cameras still have the ability to dispatch the fire departments the way they're currently dispatching them, so.
That would just make, I just, I get those random thoughts.
Well, when you're down there playing pickleball, I get that. I, I think that would solve itself, actually, or would go to the direction it's, you know, different.
I'm going to ask over this with Keith. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second. And a motion in second. Can you, hearing that, all those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries.
Thank you.
Again, I love the cooperation between the two counties. Highway Department, recommendation for approval, special event permit, rock the block around two thousand twenty-one. As long as they do it.
Yes, I think they're planning on. Luke Mastin, Highway Director, Brian just stole my thunder, but, you know, that's the item that I'm here for. We have reviewed the permit application. All of the checkpoint agencies have been notified and have not had any issues. The event date is scheduled for April twenty-fourth of this year.
Move it through. Sir. And a motion in second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries. Let's get it on.
Alright.
Let's get it moved.
April. I love it. Let's go. I thought I did. So, item number, well. Item number two, we were going to make a recommendation for the order or paint contract. We still have an outstanding insurance question, so we're not in a position to make that recommendation. We should be able to, it should.
Look, I had a question on that, 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 I was looking at the list of roads that you're planning on striping, but the part that you paved on Clark School Road going out, and that actually goes all the way to Shelby Line. That, that needs to be striped, and I didn't see that on that list.
So, if you look at the map, we tried to pick routes that are continuous. When we have a contractor come in, we get better unit pricing if they stay on the same road for multiple miles. So that could be one of the reasons that that section didn't get in there. If it needs some sort of temporary striping, ideally, it would be on next year's striping program, but we have a paint machine that we could, if we need to, we could do some striping on, so.
It, it could really use striping, especially at nighttime. That's, it just needs it.
Okay. And on some of these roads at night, you better not follow the striping.
Yeah, it depends. Yes.
Well, that was the contractor.
I know. That was always the contractor.
I want to go around forty-four on that to one, into one thirty-five there at the intersections. It's a scary one, though. Does that send you right into the calves?
That's not ours.
Yeah, I know.
I know exactly what you're talking about, because I saw that today.
Yeah, at night, that would be dangerous.
So that would not be on this year's cycle, but if it needs, we can take a look at it and look into it in the end.
That'd be great.
Kinda. Thank you.
Thanks, Luke. Lord of Commissioners, appointment of NINMA Conservancy District Board Member. We have one, I think, is, oh, it was Darlene Mudd.
That would be me.
Who's currently, currently on it.
Yes.
I move to appoint Darlene Mudd for another term.
Second. And a motion in second. Darlene, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hosts, motion carries, ma'am. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate it. Justice Center Campus Fiber Network Project Bid Award Recommendation and Approval. And a motion in second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts.
For the record, can we just say that it was awarded to Claus and Communications, Inc.?
Sure.
Thank you.
For the record, it's on there. Resolution twenty-eight twenty dash R dash two, recommending re-establishment cumulative capital development fund in Johnson County, Indiana, under Indiana Code thirty-six dash nine dash fourteen. Move it through. Second. And a motion in second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries. Resolution twenty-two twenty dash R dash three, resolution of Johnson County Board of Commissioners approving order of the Johnson County Plan Commission for the Johnson County I sixty-nine corridor economic development area.
Now, the first question I got, because I serve on the RDC, is why isn't the I sixty-five corridor on there? Nobody called me, nobody said anything to me that they were willing to take that off.
I had a request bullet from the agenda. It's from the RDC.
So, are, are we just, in essence, tabling it to another date? But then we should have left it on there and made a motion to table, I think, to take it off. We've got people here today who want to speak to it, I'm sure. And I was planned on, I was prepared to speak to it myself.
At this point, then, it's not on the agenda.
It'll be talked about in the future. Near future.
Yeah, I know, but I wanted to hear what some of the people had to say.
Well, you know, the public hearing for the sixty-nine is, would be the next step for sixty-nine, on the twenty-second.
So when's the I sixty-five going to be back on?
When it's due. It's not up to me.
That would be up to the RDC to recommend on, on the agenda.
How did the RDC make the decision to take that off?
Soon they have enough membership to do so.
So what, you just poll till you get enough numbers and click?
No.
How, how's that happen?
How do you vote?
Without me knowing anything about it. I didn't know anything about it until I got here.
The deal with this is we'd like I sixty-five pulled off for right now to discuss a little bit further in depth. It wasn't an RDC decision.
It was a decision, it was a Commissioner's decision.
The, the polling of it from the agenda is the chairman's decision, but the request was the RDC requesting to have it. And that was due to a conversation, I assume, on the involved in the RDC. So. Why does that seem to pull?
Are we not going to have a discussion or anything? Because I hear you're planning on, we got both mayors and other people here.
They're close.
Yeah?
They're close. I'm sure they'll come back.
Okay. I don't know. I'd have to get in legality.
You have the I sixty-nine on your agenda. You want a permanent discussion of something that's not on the agenda. We typically recommend that, but.
I don't want to take action on the I sixty-nine if that's going to preclude the other. I don't want people to think we're just, we're just doing one and not the other, or at least not having that debate on the other.
Do you have a question?
No.
Sorry.
I'm just looking at you.
So I'm asking you a question.
So. At this point in time, with what's on the agenda, the agenda is the resolution for the I sixty-nine. And we can vote to table that.
Yeah, okay, is there a, is time of, of essence on one or the other? No?
You can move them both if you'd like. I mean, you can table this one as well.
I'd like to see us do both at the same time, so that we can have those discussions and talk about the negatives and the positives associated with either one of them. I'll maybe table.
I'll second that. Table. Not, I disagree or disagree with Commissioner, but I think. In whatever form it's actually, so. And a motion seconds to table. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts.
Aye.
Motion carries. General Business Claims.
Uh, claims, I've got a few. I had one that was on the credit card list of Superior Two, Krovers, six hundred and thirty dollars, huh? Typically, when I see food on there for a court, it's a jury trial, but it was an even number, six hundred and thirty dollars Krovers, anyway. I had a couple others. Examination of records, ma'am. We, we paid the state six thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars on it. Did they ever give you a reduction in the amount they were charging us for that audit?
We've not paid the big bill. I'm not sure exactly what that one's for, but I'll check that and see.
Okay. And then, we had one that, there was a nine hundred and sixty-seven dollar twenty-three cents from the treasurer of the state or two for erroneous entries. I just, I've never seen that before.
I can double check that, but that's probably just bookkeeping, whether they probably, where they've sent something and then they've taken it back, or we've caught that there's been numbers that didn't match, but I'll double check that and let everyone know.
Okay. This, this is a good one. I like this at the park. Non-reverting, lawn, entertainment.
What was it?
Lawn?
Lawn.
Like the color here, entertainment. I thought that, I was kind of curious. Six hundred and seventy-five. Anyway, and then I had, I always like one for the sheriff. Where'd the sheriff go?
Probably left.
He's out there.
He only ran late, he only even late without me getting him on a claim.
Oh, no, I look forward to this.
Spatial Teams, Indy Paintball Battleground. Do they go there for training? Is that what?
Yes, that's correct.
That was, I thought.
I could answer that one.
Well, it was just kind of unusual, because when I see paintball, I think the kids being out there. Yeah, that, that's the only one I had, but I always like to get one for the sheriff, I can.
You can quit showing up anytime you want, Sheriff, just send Barnhart or somebody.
They leave around three. I can't find them.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Yeah, of course, we don't have the manifest for credit cards. We won't have that till our next meeting, but just going to mention one more time about all of these purchases at Amazon these departments are making. I just wish they would reconsider that and look at local vendors more for a variety of reasons I don't know. Other than that, I move to approve claims.
Second. And a motion in second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries. Commissioner, minutes two twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one. Any corrections? Second. Motion in second. Any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hosts, motion carries.
I just have a quick correction on, for the next minutes, okay? You know, your snow day, you banked seven and a half hours of personal leave with expiration of twelve thirty-one twenty-one. That's for the record only.
Thank you very much for keeping us, keeping us informed. Public comment, five minutes or less, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Appreciate, appreciate your time. My name is Adam Stone. I'm a, I'm a licensed active CPA in the state of Indiana, and I have been asked by the mayors of City of Franklin as well as the City of Greenwood to come speak on their behalf today with regards to the I sixty-five portion of Resolution two, two thousand twenty R three. Ultimately, we understand that that was, that was tabled, removed from the agenda. We appreciate, appreciate that action.
Adam, would you mind removing your mask? I have trouble, yeah.
Yeah, sure. I didn't know what the appropriate.
That's a little garbled.
Hopefully that everyone can hear me a little better now.
Yeah.
Again, I'll say my name, Adam, Adam Stone, and ultimately, so both, both the City of Greenwood Mayor's Office as well as the City of Franklin Mayor's Office had reached out to express some, some points of interest that they wanted to make, make known, and ultimately, with your action today to have that discussion, first and foremost, we appreciate that and look forward to hearing how, how that forum will be conducted. Ultimately, both mayors have prepared a letter to articulate their consideration points, and that's what I have been asked today to come and actually present formally to the record. I don't know, ma'am, if I should provide that to you or directly to the Commissioners. Okay, yeah. So I have a few extra copies here.
Now, sure, Sheena, make sure we get those.
So ultimately, the, within the letter, what you'll see is really just an ask to have an open discussion with regards specifically to the boundaries east of I sixty-five. Ultimately, with conversations with the community development representatives of both those two communities, there was just some initial concern and question with regards to the Daily Journal article that was published on February twenty-fifth. Ultimately, just want to have the discussion and review the maps more carefully. We have a request in to look at those documents, and ultimately, just wanted an extension of time to be able to, to look at that information and have a more informed conversation. So that's what I, I'm here today to ask. In the letter, you'll see a couple other aspects that each city uniquely has, that they would ask that you consider. And ultimately, it really rolled back to the boundary question with regards to specifically the I sixty-five allocation areas, okay? Ultimately, the ask is just to participate in that discussion and review the information together. We appreciate the added time so that we can have the opportunity to review those boundary maps, review those exhibits, and look forward to coming back and having, having those conversations. If you have any questions for me, both Mayor's Office have my contact information. Otherwise, I'm sure we'll see, see each other in future meetings. Thank you. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Happy to answer any questions you have.
You're a CPA?
I'm an active CPA in the state of Indiana. Yes, sir.
And what firm are you with?
Uh, I'm owned from Stone Municipal Group, um, and I'm licensed to practice, and I've been representing local governments across the country for the last six years.
Are you based here in?
I'm based in Greenwood, Indiana.
You're in, yeah, thank you.
Good. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Hi there, Christian Maslowski, President and CEO.
I'm a razor.
I'm sorry?
Where's what happened?
I, I know, I, I, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying a new thing for COVID, right? I gotta keep ourselves entertained somehow, so.
Can I get your name again?
Christian Maslowski, President and CEO of Aspire Johnson County, the Economic Development Corporation for Johnson County. So uh, just here as well to say thank you for your continued interest in the, the exciting momentum in economic development in Johnson County. Uh, it's a very desirable community. Uh, we've had lots of discussions this week over the proposed two new areas, and there's a lot of interest from developers in further continuing the expansion. Uh, there's also a lot of questions and a lot of, um, uh, questions about the plans and, and details that we don't have, uh, answers for, and so we just wanted to be here to say we'd like to be a part of the conversation, we'd like to help convene the conversation, help answer questions that you may have, but also help, um, discuss some of the questions that we've been getting. So, uh, thank you for your, your interest, and again, a lot of folks here today, um, are very interested in this topic, and, and we just wanna, wanna see the prosperity continue in Johnson County.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for your question. I just, I guess, to make, um, is that, is that, sir, um, the discussion, I think, coming to here is, is not really where that discussion needs to be. Does it not need to be with the RDC, an RDC meeting? Uh, we hear my thoughts. Basically, all we're doing is approving or not approving something the RDC, just as we do the, the planning and zoning, something they bring to us, uh, to approve. Uh, I would think and hope that that discussion would be with the RDC, um, as they continue to meet and discuss this prior to, and, and knowing that they're really the ones responsible for that. So, if I could just put that out there, I appreciate you coming here and I appreciate hearing uh, what everybody has to say on that, but I, I think coming to here is a little premature. It really needs to go, now that this has been tabled, uh, maybe start that discussion with the RDC on, on those getting together, and I think that's the purpose, and I think that's the point. That the RDC was trying to make, is that, well, it's more discussion on it, so, um, I think that's a wise move, uh, on everybody's part, and I think that from here, it should be a discussion we can continue with, so. Thank you very much for coming, mayors, I appreciate that. Um, I appreciate the, the ability of the RDC to, to look at things a little differently as we move forward, so. I'm good, I am really glad to see the mayors here. I am too, yeah.
I'm really trying hard to bite my tongue. Lynn's staying right here to keep it quiet.
She'll tie for you. I think there'll be a time here in the near future.
Well, I just, I like Ron's comment about, he just heard something today, should have seen my feeling when I read this in the newspaper that Saturday morning, so that's my comment, that's it.
Okay. I'm sure there'll be other debates soon to come. So. And all hearts and minds remain clear.
Well, I, I've spoken to both mayors and I've spoken with Christian, and I said to all three that it's not the county's wish to do anything that would hurt the cities and towns of the county. We've always been a good partner and, and we'd like to continue to do so. But I did mention, uh, I think to all three of you, that it's kind of been a one-way street in the past, and we're looking for a little bit more, uh, two-way action. But, uh, it's, it's not our design or our wish to do anything that's gonna hurt the cities and towns, so. I'm looking forward to the discussion. I, I think it'll be healthy and it'll be good for all of us, so. Thank you guys for coming to this.
Nothing else, it'll be lively. From, from at least a few texts that I've gotten, from one of the mayors.
I love you, Brian.
I love you too, sir, I really do. Got a fifty shot there. So I say, uh, so I said, I'll bite the beer, okay? Anyway, I appreciate it, everybody.
I move to adjourn, unless you got something else.
Have a motion in second, word adjourned, thank you very much.